Glad to be so excited. But I came calling the meeting to order at this time. It's my duty to inform you that at 6:30 this evening, we did have open the executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel related issues. Would you all please rise and join me in the meeting.
The United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Dr. Richard Garley Alzus for this evening as our new board secretary. Would you mind calling him? Mrs. Elder? Here. Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mrs. Kozar?
Here.
Dr. Lachlan?
Here.
Mrs. Maynes?
Here.
Mr. Muller?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. George. Thank you, Mrs. Alzus. You're welcome. It's now time for hearing of visitors, part one, which is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board about anything on tonight's agenda. If you have anything else to discuss, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. So if you'd like to address the board about tonight's agenda, please come to the podium and give us your name and address. Same, no one? I will move for adoption of resolution number one, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 24th, 2014. Second. It's been moved in seconded. We approve the minutes. Any questions, comments, or discussion on them? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Those pass unanimously. Solicitors report, Mr. Naples?
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Naples. Legislative report, Dr. Lachlan. Only thing is Corvitz considering, Governor Corvitz considering calling back legislators to Harrisburg for a special session on headship. Thank you. Under education and planning, the first thing on your agenda is the enrollment report. Mr. Parker, do you want to notify that?
No report until we just always keep our eyes on the kindergarten numbers.
At this point, I feel very comfortable for another month. Till they all start pouring in.
Correct.
Thank you so much. There are two resolutions to accept tuition students. The first one is to accept local tuition students. The second one, number three, is to accept, re-initiate from Chile. So I would like to move for the adoption of both resolution number two and resolution number three. Thank you. It's been moved in seconded. We adopt resolution number two and resolution number three. Any questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously. Educational programs, Dr. Tepper?
No report.
Thank you. The next curriculum meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 19th at 5:00 p.m. here in the Center for Student Creativity. That is prior to the regular meeting of the board in August. And that ends my report, and I will turn this over to Mrs. Elder for final.
Thank you very much. We will note that your, the first resolution is to approve the treasurer's report. I'd like to bundle that, and there is an attachment. And I'd like to bundle that with resolution number 005, the payment of bills, and move for adoption of both of those.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. We adopt resolutions number four and five. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And those resolutions pass unanimously.
Mr. President, this is a side getting the meeting minutes what we do now is great. That gives us all time. Gives us a weekend.
I agree.
Time to look at this one.
Thank you.
I move for adoption of resolution number six, which is that we approve a contract with SWEAT and Crawford to provide least professional liability coverage for our new school resource officer, Frank Tempo, in the amount of $1,795 per year.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. We adopt resolution number six. Any questions, comments, or comments? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
And I move for adoption of resolution number seven, to accept a grant for the Brenner-Luttrell Partners Education Foundation to give an annually renewable amount of $15,000 for the purpose of supporting personnel costs.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. We adopt resolution number seven. Questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously also.
And we're going to have a finance meeting, finance committee meeting on the 30th of July. That's because of the way the Wednesdays hit the Tuesdays coming up in August and our meetings. So we're having it a week early. But that will be in time for our committee to hold in regular meetings. So the finance committee will be meeting Wednesday, July 30th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Edmond Building. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Property and supplies, Mr. Kozar?
Thank you. You'll see attachment five and attachment five point one about the project.
This is the current department.
Good evening. Athletic project wise, real brief. There's a few outstanding projects that each contractor has to do. We are receiving closeout documentation, which is their ass builds, warranties, and their own end manuals, a lot of paperwork aspect of the project. I foresee closing out project, the contracts at the next board meeting, a majority of them, ones that still have some outstanding issues, won't close until they're complete. With the athletic complex, all in all, is complete. There's, like I said, a few cosmetic issues we're addressing, which are the fieldhouse and the press box, but all in all, the district has been utilizing the fields. And I know Mr. Meara's been in the fieldhouse and the press box quite a bit, so that's all set and ready to go. The junior high, there's been a flurry of activity throughout the summer. If you've been on the exterior of the building, you've seen the structural steel going in, canopies being built, really defining that entry space in the bus canopy as well. The roof deck will be going on, wrapping up by the end of this week, and the orange roof will be starting next week, so it really gives that pop of color to the junior high entryway. As far as the interior, the main corridor, we are putting ceiling pads and ceiling grid, all the interior trusses, the painting, the softits, the wall finishing, that's been complete. And the connector corridor, which we redid, pulled off the floor, concrete floor, put that in, that's been built, all the windows been put in place, and they're putting ceiling pads in as well there as well. So that's coming right along. I see no issues with starting school, that was always a big concern. As far as schedule, we're moving right along. I have all the faith in your G C in getting complete towards the end of the summer. And then flooring finishes, prep work's begun as well, so the flooring will be going down here over the next week or so. So the orange will come out and find its way, anybody give shape to that? I think it'd be a really nice add to the junior high school. Any questions on anything? Go through that real quick.
Yeah, the last thing would be the facilities assessment on L E S, that's moving right along. My engineers have completed the mechanical plumbing part portion of it. We've done the code search portion of it and the ADA portions of it. Scheduled with the construction engineer to be out there on Thursday to look at that portion of it, so we will, we should be able to wrap that report up for you in August and deliver it to you in September. So that's where I'm tracking.
Thank you, Mr. Alzus.
Hello, good evening. Jess is getting my presentation ready because I did bring with me our layout and what the playground is actually going to look like. And to some people that are sitting, there's some of our babies who have worked very hard to make this happen, this is also going to be the first time they get to see this, so it's very exciting. I came at the beginning of the year and I shared with you our desire to initiate phase one of the outdoor classroom, which we had chosen to be the primary playground, that we would like to add to that, the behind the building, right below the field, the baseball field that is there, in between the kindergarten and first grade classrooms. And we have, by teachers working very hard, a lot of our kindergarten teachers spend a lot of time writing grants, and we were very successful at receiving numerous grants, and I will share that with you as well. We also continued with the Rocket Read-a-Thon, the Long Burger Basket, Bingo, all things that raise large amounts of money that is truly making this possible, and we are definitely ready to roll. So let me show you. This is our playground. You can see at the top is the front view of the, of part of the playground, I will say part of the playground because the next slide has the rest. And the bottom is the back view. The surface that we are putting down, our playgrounds right now have the mulch surface, but in the primary playground, we had a lot of discussion about safety concerns with kindergartners, they try to eat it, they throw it, it's in their eyes. So we decided that it would be better to put in a corded place surface. This type of surface is a rubber-like surface that is much smoother, not only for safety concerns, it is also something that will allow our students with special needs easier access to all of the playground equipment. Wheelchairs and walkers going through mulch is much more difficult than the corded place surface. It was a little more costly, but we decided that the benefits of it were priceless, so here we would just work a little harder, raise a little more money, and make it happen. We also purchased numerous pieces of adaptive play equipment, and they are at the bottom of the back view, if you see, if you look down there, there's a chime panel, the bell panel, and a drum set. There is a cottage. And now if you're looking at the cottage, it does show that there's, it's a closed cottage on one side. We have had that special need that is open, so that a student in a wheelchair can go the whole way through, so it will not be stopped. So that would definitely be for some creative play. And on the next slide, you'll see that we do have an accessible swing set, or a seat for the swing set. So our playground will definitely benefit every student. So if you have any questions about that part, we do have the beam at the bottom, we have the rock wall.
How tall is the line of fall?
Oh, I don't know the specs on that to be exact, but it's safe.
We, we, it's not very tall.
No, it's not very tall, and it's basically what they do to impound some of the stuff. No, they will be safe, trust me. They will definitely be safe. And this is the swing set that we've also purchased. We debated this and different types of swings, because the radius that you needed around the swing set for safety was a lot, but the kids want swings, they all want to swing, so we made sure we got swings. Finance wise, and up until today, this slide looked a little differently. The total cost of the playground with the board in place and the community bill was approximately $77,000. The P T O, in their efforts with the Bag of the Community and all their fundraising, we were at approximately $65,000. We had some money in C D, some money from fundraising that we still needed to incorporate, we were around $65,000. Earlier today, probably about 2 o'clock, the donations and grants line originally said around $12,000. Today, we received a phone call and our grant has gone up to about $30,000. So with that being said, we've had numerous in-kind donations, especially to the site preparation, all of the prep work and the cement work. I know I'm not using correct terms, all the digging and everything that was involved in that and the layout, all of those were in-kind donations. Everybody has chipped in. Who's on Hank? I think he left Hank. Hank was our main man, he came in and he even helped us. So everybody has been involved in making this possible. I would like to say that at this point, today we were a couple thousand shy, we were waiting on some grants, but at this point, we are moving forward with phase one fully funded. So we actually don't have to eliminate anything from our wish list. We have pads that we've poured to place, some picnic benches and just right for benches for seating, we can now purchase those. Before, they were kind of on a wish list, we tried to raise enough money, maybe purchase them later, but now it is definitely going the reality, so I'm very excited about that. The next part that I would like to announce is the community build. What we are doing is we're not having the company come in and build our playground. This will be a community build. And our community build will be on August 7th, with a rain date or a run over date, we kept calling it, of August 8th. What we are looking for, and we put this out there, and there are many businesses in the community who are offering us workers and volunteers. Many companies have community service hours they need to do, and they are volunteering their time to come and help us with the build. But we are definitely looking for skilled workers and unskilled workers. Skilled workers, in kids' terms, are people with tools, they know their names, they know how to do stuff. Okay, that is not me, I'm an unskilled worker. And my skills will be serving beverages, food, and running the DJ booth, because we will have music, it will be a good time, we will serve breakfast, we will serve lunch to all the volunteers.
What time?
According to Mike Jeffries, if we start at 8:00 a.m. on a seven, and we have enough volunteers, we will be done by 2:30. Fakers cross, no rain, no big storms, and that's hopefully where we're heading with that. We need all types of volunteers, people to clean up the boxes and the packaging, people to pick something up and carry it to another area. Jeffrey, Jeffrey Associates will be there supervising everything, so they will put these little inspection on it, and they look over everything that we do as a community as a build. So if anyone would like to volunteer, don't hesitate to contact me, you can help me serve cookies and coffee and sandwiches. What I do want to do, and I know, if you guys probably looked in, and all these ladies are here with me tonight, I wanted to recognize the efforts of everyone. I don't want somebody to think, oh, Kim came in, it's her first year, she's spending all this money, here she goes, you know, it's not, this isn't me. This is the effort of so many people and years of effort. This isn't just this year's P T O, this isn't just the kindergarten teachers this year doing this. Beginning the outdoor classroom in phase one is a dream come true for like many people. The efforts to make this happen, like I said, were not just from the people of this year. The Rocket Read-a-Thon, I'm going to read it so I want to make sure I hear it. The Rocket Read-a-Thon was started many years ago to generate funds for a new playground, and it's the one that currently sits at Bagley on the fourth grade side of the building. The fundraising continued in order to fund the maintenance of those playgrounds, but in the fall of 2008, Dr. Carano presented his big picture, AKA the outdoor classroom, to the P T O officers, and some of those ladies are with us tonight, Brenda Gates, Marcy Lynn Noddeki, Michelle Sylvania, Jody Johnson, Christina, she's not here, Nina Stein, Marla Zeski. Dr. Carano gathered a team of teachers, P T O members, Jessica Holden, and everybody sat down, they brainstormed ideas of what they dreamed this outdoor classroom to look like, what would it include? Among those ideas was additional play space, and that's why we started with the primary playground. They continue to raise funds, and like I said, now we're officially beginning phase one of the project, fully funded, and hopefully this is just the first phase of many, because we really truly want to get as much of that outdoor classroom, big picture, up and used by the students at Bagley and the community at Bagley, because this is definitely a community project. I do have a unit, I named some, we have Tricia Elliott, who is a current officer, Michelle Morrison, Marla, Marla Zeski, sorry Jenny, I skipped you, Jenny, I stopped. I did say Marcy Lynn. Oh, Kim Morrison, because I said Michelle, call me Michelle. Angela Apple, Michelle Sylvania, Jody Johnson, Stacy Legone, Pam Masco, Grandma Sandy, or Sandy Ragerio, that's it, right? But these ladies have all worked hard. Rocket Read has been very successful, they have solicited for baskets. It was truly good for Q, that was a huge event, and I watched it happen, it was like, we didn't want to talk to these ladies because it was stressful and it was like planning a wedding for them, but they, I know, they pulled it together, they did an awesome job, and it was all for the kids. So I want to thank you, and I hope you're excited, as we are, to get this ball rolling, and we hope to see you at the, at the build as well. Does anybody have any questions?
No, but thank you. Thank you. Has a bag of her.
Maybe we'll see it as well.
If Eric wants to know, before he commits.
One pistachio cookie, I do have, who knows that, and chocolate, you have it. Whatever kind of cookie you want, I'll make it. Boy won't make it, somebody will make it. I'll serve it to you.
Unskilled baker too?
An unskilled what? Baker. Oh, that's me, I'm unskilled and all that. Okay, any questions for anyone? Well, thank you for your support in giving us the go-ahead at the beginning of the year to get the ball in.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And our next topic is Friday meeting, it is Thursday, July 31st, 3:30 in the, is that my report is due? And I am happy to. We'll move to the next activity, right away. The stellar night is next, the following Friday, August 1st, then April at 5:00 p.m. And also the weight rail will be starting to, all the equipment is coming Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday. And the senior nights for football day and cheerleaders, because they all live together now, is September 5th, and that's the first one there.
As Kurt was saying, it's interesting, reflection of the project, because the building is scheduled to fall. All the age rooms, like, all the practices are replaced, everything goes, they have their piece with the fillouts, they're all signed, the offices are done, they're ready to go, everything will be fit. It was amazing, everything fit. We use rotary a few times, simply because it's there, if you fit truthfully, I'd say 98% of the practices and events are on the turf complex, junior high and senior high. All locker rooms have made it, fit, we have all the teams placed, all the coaches, the coaches are in the office now, because you have four coaches for girls sports, you can't put them that much, they took a little maneuvering, all the names have been put on the doors, and it's ready to go. It was amazing, because it actually fit. The other thing I'll say, it's kind of interesting, our football team plays second this week, a big 14 team, seven on seven, I think that Frank and Ragerio actually have big flaps for the big girl room, are already anxious, it's bugging me to flip the field house, we flip that up, and I thought that was kind of neat to see the enthusiasm from that, and they beat half of them, that was good. And I don't want to say too much about yet, I don't want to think too much all over, I'll give you the official detail, but when we had our booster meeting with, we had reported everything, the governor, state report this year with booster organizations, so I called them all in the meeting while we were there, we talked about a lot of things in the school district, and the complex, and all this, and the whole nine yards. I came up with the idea of the booster clubs all united to show the community they were all just together, even winter sports. And what they decided to do was, is we discussed it, they're all going to make a donation, we touched donations, pretty much all of them, and we're on the phone about three more messages to return, but we have enough pledges now on paper that I think tomorrow the principals and I are going to get the equipment lined up for inside, like my old orders. Things we're going to need, the boosters have donated, I believe, as we purchased them, and not money to pay for everything, as a group of boosters for the school district, and they're just going to put a sign up saying this concession stands at number one. I thought that was really cool, even winter sports, because then they want to borrow the stuff for winter break inside, and use it, wrestle them a basketball, or all, show them all, and I mean, I still need the day one to help finish it off, so we don't have to buy anything else of additional money day one. So I thought something I guess we'd wrap, that was kind of cool, this yellow booster coming out. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Lachlan. Dr. George is not here. The later community parks and recreation commission meeting minutes from April the 17th are at attachment number six. The May meeting was canceled due to lack of a forum. We did meet in June, we will get those next month. So that's all, unless somebody else has something under community relations. The intermediate unit, the W I U board minutes from June 24th are attachment number seven, and again, I did not attend that meeting because that was our actual regular meeting here, so, but read them. Given questions, I would like to get this answered for you. E W C T C joint operating meeting, Mrs. Kozar?
Yeah, the minutes from our last meeting on June 25th are attached, no read.
Thank you very much. Your policy, P S B meeting, Mrs. Elder?
Yes, first I'd like to call your attention to the sheet, it's handout before the beginning of this meeting, P S B A's Brett, for its P contact program, if you want to participate in that, the form and the contact information is there. Also, I call your attention to the fact that in your weekly, or daily, I'm sorry, it used to be weekly, now it's daily publication from P S B A, there's things to determine your legislative priorities, and if you want to participate in that, I would urge you to do so, the same contact information you have to put in before you can participate, but it's not difficult to do. I move for adoption of the policy, this is below, this is the second reading of these policies, and I move for adoption of all of them.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. We adopt resolution number eight. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you, that's my support.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Mr. Music?
Thank you. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, August 13th, at 3:00 at the senior high conference.
Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Our next meeting will be Tuesday, August 12th, here.
Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Fisher?
I ask the board to move on resolution number nine, the reservations that are listed there.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. We adopt resolution number nine, any questions or discussion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 10, which is the professional personnel appointments. It is a quite lengthy list of substitute teachers, many of these people have served the district for several years, but they are approved on an annual basis.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved in seconded. We adopt resolution number 10, any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
I ask the board to approve resolution number 11, which is the teacher leader positions for the 2014-15 school year, and I'd just like to mention that I truly appreciate the time that these teacher leaders spend assisting with many crucial decisions in the district.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. We adopt resolution number 11, any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And last, I ask that I recommend to the board to approve resolution number 12, which is to support personnel classified appointments for substitute classroom assistants and personal assistants.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. We adopt resolution number 12. We adopt Resolution Number Twelve. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Any more votes? And that passes unanimously.
And just a note to remind everyone, Mr. Ray's over the mic still over here about the August 7th bill, August 8th rain date, as well as the teacher in-service days. It'll be here before you know it. Our August 18th, 19th, and 20th. That's a Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And our first date for students is Monday, August 25th. I'm sure many parents are certainly then dating, starting it. The board is a date to look forward to. So just so important dates to remember.
Thank you. It's now time for Hearing of Visitors Part Two. Anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on any, any idea can approach the podium and speak, just give us your name and ask. Seeing none. Any other business to come before the board this evening? Not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Do you adjourn? Thank you so much for your time.